Ready? Are you ready? Good evening. The regular meeting of the Belfour City Council is called to order on Monday, August 26th, at 7:02 PM to open session. We are reconvening from the closed session, and I'll just make, uh, just want to make a correction. Earlier, it was announced that Councilmember Coops was recusing himself on item, um, uh, three A, oh, four A, no, three A, of the regular agenda items, and upon verification, he was able to participate in the discussion of, of that agenda item. All right, roll call, please.
Councilmember Hamada?
Here.
Councilmember Coops?
Here.
Mayor Protem Garza?
Here.
Councilmember Denton?
Here.
Mayor Santinas?
Here. Uh, tonight's invocation will be led by myself, and then the pledge of allegiance will be led by Joel Huckman, our Director of Public Safety. Please rise. Heavenly Father, we recognize your greatness and your presence among us tonight. We thank you for all the blessings you have bestowed upon us. We thank you for the gift of life. We thank you for giving us this wonderful city called City of Bellflower. We thank you for giving us wonderful and dedicated staff. Please continue to watch over them so that they can continue their work to make our city better. We thank, uh, we thank you for giving us our members of our military, our first responder, our Sheriff's Department, Fire Department, paramedics, for all that they do to keep us safe. Please watch over them as they watch over us so that they can keep us safe. Please give comfort to those who are ill, those who are homeless, those who are hungry, those who are unemployed. Please give them the comfort that they need and console them. As we gather tonight to discuss the matters before us, please enlighten us, guide us, and give us the wisdom to decide what is best for the city. We ask all this in your name. Amen.
Please face the flag and join me in saying, "I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all."
Uh, thank you, Joel, and, uh, I, I forgot to make the announcement that there was no reportable action taken at the, the closed session. All right, City Council announcements, let me start. Please join us, the community, to learn about the City of Bellflower's recent accomplishments and future goals. The State of the City presentation and luncheon will be taking place on Thursday, October 3rd, at 11:30 P. A., 11:30 AM, at the Main Events Center. Tickets are for $20 per person and are now on sale through September 23rd. Tickets may be purchased online to bellflower.org or in person at Sims Park, Thompson Park, or Caladres Park. For more information, please call 562-804-1424, extension 2267. Uh, Mayor Protem Garza?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is a reminder that City Hall will be closed on Monday, September 2nd, in observance of Labor Day. There will be no trash collection or street sweeping on that day. Trash pickup for the rest of that week will be delayed one day. That's it. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor Protem Garza. Councilmember Ray Denton?
Thank you, Mayor. The 21st Annual Bellflower Car Show will be taking place Saturday, September 28th, from 2:00 PM to 7:00 PM. Come and join over 10,000 people and see over 400 classic cars and trucks. There will be great food from our local restaurants, food trucks, live music. Entry is free and open to the public. Thank you, Mayor.
Uh, thank you, Councilmember Denton. Councilmember Denton Coops?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. In 2020, Los Angeles County will transition from polling places to vote centers. This new model will allow voters to cast a ballot at any vote center location in the, in the county over an 11-day period. So you won't have to go to your local polling place anymore. You'll have 11 days to cast your vote. To learn more, visit HTTPS@vsap unlavote.net. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Coops. Councilmember Raymond Hamada?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Let's see, one of Bellflower's newest developments is now officially open for business. Come out and enjoy a delicious, a delicious meal at the In-N-Out located on Bellflower Boulevard and Artesia Boulevard. I've, I've been there twice already, so, so everybody else should too. All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Hamada. Uh, tonight is a special night for us. I think one of the first things that happened in City of Bellflower, we have a young gentleman who, um, who won the, um, World Champion Performing Arts Junior Grand Championship, and he's a resident of Bellflower, and let me call on Shane Soloria to join us at the riser together with my colleagues. Uh, first, he'll make the presentation to you for your accomplishment, and after that, uh, we will let you entertain us. All right, I said, I made the announcement that we have a young gentleman here who did well in the, in the World Championship, and he won the grand championship. Uh, his name is Shane Soloria. So on behalf of the City of Bellflower, I'd like to make this presentation. It's a certificate of achievement presented to Shane Soloria, Junior Grand Champion. Congratulations on being the Junior Grand Champion for Variety, at, for Variety at the World Championship of Performing Arts. The City of Bellflower commends you for your hard work and dedication and wishes you continued success. Signed by Mayor Sunny Santa Inez, Mayor Protem Juan Garza, Mayor, uh, Councilmember Ray Denton, Councilmember Raymond Hamada, and Councilmember Denton Coops. Oh, okay, okay. All right, goodies, all right. Okay, here, let's share, let's share. Okay, let's share that. Okay? There you go. And I'll hold this, okay? Wonderful, okay? All right, very good. Right, Shane? Tell us what you did.
Um, so I am, okay.
I'll hold this for now.
Okay.
There you go.
So I'm a ventriloquist, and I performed over there and won Junior Grand Champion for performing ventriloquism and singing.
And how old are you?
I am 12.
Okay, and how, and where's your mom?
Uh, my parents are right there.
Oh, your daddy?
Those two.
Okay, all right, very good.
So did you bring your, uh?
Yes, I did.
Oh, you want, you want to bring him and show us?
Sure, yeah.
No, so you're gonna wake him up? His name?
Yeah, I need to wake him up first.
His name is, his name's Winston, right?
Yes.
Winston, all right. Do you need the mic, you need a microphone?
Yeah, I need a microphone.
Okay, so why didn't you, why didn't you wake up Winston now and we wait here and then we'll go, we'll go back to our seats so we can watch you?
Is that okay?
Yeah, okay. Can you see now? Okay?
He's gonna be first for Sunny.
Okay, so we're gonna, we're gonna go back, so we can see him.
All right.
All right, there you go. All right, Shane, take it, take it away. There you go. All right.
Okay, so, hi, my name is, uh, Winston, I'm a turtle, and, uh, I'm going to be singing, uh, "My Way" by Trent Sinatra with, uh, this, uh, I don't know this kid. Uh, can you restart it? Can you restart it? Can you restart it?
Restart it.
Sorry. I've had a few. Wait, this is not a rock. Sorry, my, my dad is the best. He's... He gave the wrong gears. Well, you're the best, Dad, yay!
Yay!
There you go. And now, the end is near, and so I face the final curtain. My friend, I'll say it clear, and I'll state my case, although which I am certain. I've lived this life that's full, and I've traveled each and every highway. Thanks Amazon, hey! And more, much more than this. I did it my way. Regrets, I've had a few. Me too. But then again, too few to mention. I did what I had to do, and I saw it through without exemption. I planned each hardened course, each careful step. And now, did my way, and more, much more than this. I did it my way. Yes, there were times, I'm sure you knew, when I bit off more than I could chew. But through it all, when there was doubt, I ate it up and spit it out. I ate this little, and I stood tall, and did it my way. I loved, I loved to cry, I've had my fill, and my jealousy. And now, this tears does I give, I deal. Oh, so amusing. To think, we did all this. Yeah, we did. And may we say, not in a shy way, oh, no. Oh, no, not me. We did it our way. For what is a turtle? What? What has he got? A heart shell. If not himself, then he has not. To say the things you truly feel. And of the words? Of the one who deals. The record shows? He took all the flaws. And did it my way. No, it's our way, not, not your way. Wait, Sid, it's always been your way, so it's, it's gotta be my way now. Fine, you win this time, but I just needed everybody to listen to these few words that 'll kind of lie there in there. See them? Yes, it was my way. Thank you.
Thank you, Winston?
Yes.
All right, thank you so much, everything. All right, thank you.
That's good.
Yeah, it is.
Had a lot of practicing.
Yeah. All right, Shane, thank you so much. We hope to see you at America's Got Talent sometime in the future. Thank you. All right, public comments, Mr. Stewart.
This is the time set aside for the public to address the City Council on matters not listed on the agenda. Anyone wishing to address the City Council should come to the podium, be recognized by the mayor, and state your name for the record. If you wish to address the City Council on an agenda item, you may do so by approaching the podium as we review that particular item. You'll be given a reasonable amount of time to address the City Council.
So we invite anyone who'd like to speak, uh, to the City Council on a non-agenda item.
Um, I don't know if this is on the agenda, I didn't look, but, um, I reside at 9605 Beach Street, three doors down from the church, St. Bernard's, and the church is playing bells. I don't know if you're aware of it. They're playing bells from 7:00 in the morning till 10:00 at night. It's so loud that I cannot even hear my TV. So this morning, I went over and asked them if we could resolve this, and they told me that the mayor encouraged this, these bells to be played. So they told me if I didn't like it to come to City Hall. So, so here I am.
So if you can give your address to the City Manager, we'll, we'll look into it?
Okay, 9605.
Okay, we'll look into it, we'll get back to you.
It's just very, very disturbing, especially 7:00 in the morning is when it starts.
Okay. So is it, is it every day or every day?
It is every day.
Every day, okay.
Every day. It goes on, starts at 7:00 in the morning, and it doesn't end till 10:00 at night, and it's very loud.
All right.
It's an hourly chime?
I thought it was an hourly chime.
It's an hourly chime, and occasionally they'll play, uh, music, but it's not a chime, they have gigantic speakers.
Yeah, the bell, it's been going on for years.
Um, I just moved in the neighborhood.
Okay, it's been going on for years, so, yeah.
It's 7:00 in the morning?
Yeah.
That's a little early, don't you think? But I don't know how to handle this.
From what I understand is, uh, the bells were operating for many years, a long, long time ago, and then some, it, it broke for a few years, so you didn't hear any noise, and actually, somebody complained not hearing the, the church bell. So they, they took some effort to, to put it back and repair it, so now it's back, so...
Okay, I'm telling you, it's so loud that I cannot even hear my TV in my, in my place.
Okay.
So I don't know how, how I resolve this issue.
We will look into that and get back to you.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
I don't think he stated his name.
He did.
He did, okay, he did, okay, got it.
And the address too, right? Okay.
Got the address, okay.
All right, anyone else?
Good evening, Mayor, and members of the council. I'm Josh Murray, and I'm here on behalf of Clifton and Brackenseek Library, 9945 Flower Street. I'd like to take this opportunity to remind everybody that we will be closed for the first two weeks of September for our roof maintenance program. We're gonna be reopening on September 16th, 2019, for normal business hours. Um, and I would also like to inform the community that, um, from October 29th through, I'm sorry, from October 8th through October 29th on Tuesdays, from 2:00 to 4:00 PM, we are going to be hosting computer basics courses. Uh, interested in learning the basics about computers, register for our four-week program, um, to learn computer basics. Um, so a registration for that program will begin on September 16th, when we reopen at 10:00 AM.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Coops?
So you're gonna be totally shut from, uh, first September to the middle of the month, you said?
Um, yes.
There will be no activity there?
So we will be closed on the 2nd for Labor Day, and then between the 3rd and the 15th for roof renovations, and we will be reopening on the 16th.
Couldn't you have done that in the summertime, when the kids haven't gone back to school to use the library?
Um, well, the kids use the school during the summer. That is one of our busy times.
Yeah, but I mean, I would think it's more intense when school begins, and they gotta get their lessons learned.
Yeah, I, I'm, I...
You understand my concern?
Yes.
I know you didn't schedule it, but I've noticed that, you know, that library's a pretty important place.
Yes.
And to shut it down in the first two weeks of September, that's a hard swallow.
I will let my supervisor know. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Josh.
Good evening, Mayor, councilmembers. My name's Gerald, uh, what else do you need?
Please sign in, I forgot to tell, please sign in and state your name for the record.
Sure, my name's Gerald Serta, and, um, what else do you need? Gerald Serta? Address, uh, P.O. Box, fine?
Yeah, okay, that's fine.
Okay, uh, 1-846-Paramount, California, 90723. Thank you for the opportunity, uh, to allow us to speak. I want to ask, uh, to see if the city can provide a crosswalk, maybe a push-button signal to stop traffic and folks can cross on Alondra and Hater. There, there's a lot of traffic that just jaywalks, and I mentioned this to the, our, the City of Paramount, um, and they've taken it into consideration, but then I came here and I, and we noticed on the map that that, uh, intersection that, uh, from Hater, the south and north corners on Alondra actually belong to Bellflower. And, and that would be the perfect spot because it's like 1,295 feet from Lakewood to Hater, and then it's 100, uh, 1,250 feet from Hater to Downey. So it's kind of like almost right in the middle. A lot of folks...
So the crosswalk you're asking for is gonna be on Alondra or Hater?
It's gonna be on Alondra. Alondra has four lanes.
Okay.
And Hater is just a small street, but...
So because north of Alondra is Paramount, south of Alondra is Bellflower?
Yes, the, the north, the northwest, uh, section belongs to Paramount, and the east-south section belongs to Bellflower. What's that? Oops, sorry.
That one, I believe Lakewood is all back of sidewalk, and I think it wraps around, uh, to either Hater or Pitts over there. Yeah, well, as he mentioned, the northwest side is definitely within Paramount. It, this would be a, a shared intersection, similar to what we have up with Downey, yeah, and we'll, I'll have a conversation with their Public Works Department.
I suggest, why don't we coordinate the City of Paramount, see what they have to say about it, and we'll report back to the council.
Yeah, and normally, we do a traffic study first without, without, without engineer, so...
Yeah, there's a lot of roadwork.
At a minimum, it's gonna be a shared crosswalk.
Right, exactly.
So I'd wanna make sure that we both agree on the same things, the same...
So the first step there is to, for our traffic engineer to make a study, and then if it's warranted, then we approach the City of Paramount.
What I'd like, we do this, is to see if Paramount agrees that we should do a study, share the cost of the study.
Okay.
And then we'll make a joint recommendation out.
Okay, all right, we'll look into it and get back to you.
Yes, and, and just to, uh, inform, I have brought it up because there's a lot of folks that jaywalk, there's a little, uh, camel divider there. People step there and they allow traffic to go by, and then they try to run, but it's only an incident waiting to happen, and, uh, we, we would like to avoid that, uh, with, with a simple crosswalk. Uh, and I, I brought it up to the Public Works, to the Assistant City Manager, uh, to their traffic, um, um, what is it, traffic engineer?
Traffic engineer, yeah.
Yes, uh, along with some of the red curves that they have, but, I know, when, when I came here, they noticed that part of it belongs to Bellflower.
All right.
If it's a joint effort, it would be, really be appreciated. I, I also wanna ask to see if the city has any CERT programs or events coming up, the Community Emergency Respond Team, if there's anything coming up with the City of Bellflower, um, for residents?
For what again?
The community, the CERT, the Community Emergency Response Team training.
Oh, I see, I see, okay, okay. Uh, Mr. Huckman usually handles that.
I'll look for a mic. Actually, Bellflower's part of a regional CERT program with Cerritos and Norwalk, and off the top of my head, I don't know of any trainings, uh, or events in the near few weeks. I could find out and let you know.
Yeah, and also, there's any CPR, AED, and first aid training with the city. I know some cities provide it. I don't know if Bellflower provides it, but, uh, it would be nice to have the residents...
I, I believe you do because I saw in the marquee signs CPR training. I think it's being conducted at the, at our parks, so I know we have that, so, we do.
Okay, thank you very much.
All right, thank you for coming. Anyone else? All right, moving along. Oh.
Just made it in time.
Mr. Buck speaking, just sign in, please.
Yeah, I shall do that. Now, what I, what I'd like to comment on is basically, I was here earlier today, and I think you made the right decision on where you're going with trying to take care of some problems, but I think Ray really hit it on the head to hold back on putting money out for a new one so you can get control of the first one, and that would be a good thing. But I think we're still overlooking a lot of stuff. The police respond on a call basis, depending on the emergency or whatever, which is understandable. But from what I'm understanding too, with the amount of people that have been arrested or given citations, doesn't seem right, and you know as well as I do, if I gotta write somebody up, I gotta do all that paperwork. I don't wanna do that. I gotta put them in my car, and they stink to high heaven. I don't wanna do that because I gotta ride in that car all night. So a lot of it shined off, and that's a fact. And I can honestly state that right here, because when we had our TV show going years ago, part of our deals of what we were talking on came right from the Sheriff's Department as true facts. But to get back to the homeless situation, hanging out in the druggies and stuff, it's a bigger problem than what you're tackling with this park, because right now, when you look out there and you see all these food carts running around, we're looking more like Little Tijuana. That's terrible. And there, you know there's no sales tax money coming off of those things, those rickety pieces of crap, and people buying stuff off of it. Where's the Health Department involved? But my main thing is, this homeless situation is, we're getting more here than we had. We are changing some, we send some out, we get a new batch in, so some faces change, but they still come back, but when you really look at it, there are more in this town than there ever was. So you take Lakewood, they ain't gonna put up with it, they're gonna chase them out. Paramount's even chasing them out. Where are they gonna come to? Good old Bellflower, because you got a rental factor here that, that won't quit to begin with. You got a 70% rental factor, and you all know that. So where are your problems gonna be? The city with the rental factor. But we really need to address this homeless thing in a bigger manner than what you're talking about, about that little park. That little park's just a, that's not the answer to the problem. You gotta get aggressive, and the heck with all these lawyers, they wanna sue everybody. It's time somebody put this, put their foot to the ground and took the chance. And I know when you talked about that park, the liquor store is a problem, I understand that, because they're all hanging out there in the back. Ray come up with the right thing, take their conditional use permit away. The one that's in the mid, uh, middle? Well, I don't think you got a problem with that. Well, I don't think you got a problem with that one. That's, uh, I'm gonna say, that's a gay bar. And then the one on the end, it's hardly ever open except at night, real late. And I don't even know if they're open seven days a week. So the one that's in the middle, the gay bar, they're not gonna put up with the crap because they don't wanna be shut down. But the homeless thing is a problem. The needles are all over the place, you got them sleeping in, on the sidewalks now again. You got them downtown, they look terrible. So our little illustrious code enforcing people, they ain't doing nothing, their hands are tied. They ain't gonna fight with these characters. You mentioned, uh, neighborhood watch, they ain't gonna fight with them either. Too much trouble, trouble. The police need to step on the issue. And quit deal, quit worrying about this lawyer and this frivolous lawsuits all the time. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Good evening, Mayor, Honorable Council, City Staff. I just wanted to say that on our way up here tonight, coming north on Bellflower Boulevard, what a pleasant drive it was. The streets are nice, Dunkin' Donuts got their signs up. In-N-Out has a whole bunch of cars, but there's no traffic jams. And it golden corrals there, and it just really pleased to be a part of this community. I just wanna say thank you for all the work you guys do.
Thank you so much, please come back.
Yeah. Every week.
We need it once, once in a while, we need that. All right, thank you. Anyone else? Okay, with that, we're moving on to item eleven A, Mister Stewart.
So public hearing, it's consideration possible action to conduct public hearing to consider proposed adjustments to the maximum rates for residential, commercial, multifamily solid waste collection services. Adopt Resolution Number nineteen dash seventy, a resolution establishing potential rate adjustments for residential, commercial, multifamily solid waste collection services charged by CRNR Incorporated for a two-year period commencing on September first, twenty nineteen, and approve CRNR Incorporated's annual rate adjustment request for the twenty nineteen rate year.
All right, it's gonna be making the presentation, Mister Gorecki.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and Council Members. Uh, as Jeff had mentioned, uh, this evening's, uh, public hearing is centered on the, uh, the proposed rate increase, uh, for CRNR for the solid waste collection services here in the city. Just as background, uh, in twenty eleven, the city entered into a revising restated, uh, franchise agreement with CRNR that established the initial maximum rates for solid waste at that time. The agreement allows CRNR to submit an annual rate adjustment request based on approved methodology in that franchise agreement, which takes into account changes in the indexes for labor, fuel, equipment, disposal, transformation, for the CPI index for all urban consumers in the Los Angeles area. CRNR's rate adjustment requests are required to be submitted, but, to the city by June first each year in order to be considered. Prop two eighteen requires the city to hold a public hearing and mail a forty-five day notice of public hearing to the property owner and any customer of record receiving solid waste services from CRNR. In twenty fourteen, the city council adopted Resolution fourteen fifty-eight, establishing potential rate increases for solid waste services for a five-year period, which took us through September first. In twenty eighteen, the council adopted Resolution eighteen eighteen, establishing Prop two eighteen procedures for increases to solid waste rates and requiring the city council to approve the forty-five day notice of proposed adjustments. So the Prop two eighteen process has gone as follows. On May thirty-first, CRNR submitted their annual rate adjustment request to the city. In order to consider the rate adjustment request, a new Prop two eighteen proceeding must be conducted. On, therefore, on July eighth, the city approved a forty-five day notice which did the following. It provided the notice of tonight's public hearing. It contained the proposed rates for two thousand and nineteen as well as estimated rates for the two thousand and twenty year. It also disclosed that if the proposed rates are approved, they will take effect on September one, two thousand and nineteen, and it contained the official ballot for property owners or authorized representatives wishing protest the proposed rates. On July eleventh, the city mailed the forty-five day notice out to a total of eleven thousand five hundred and seventy-three property owners and customers of record. The proposed rates cannot take effect if the city council finds that a majority of ratepayers protested the rate increase. A majority protest in this case would be equal to five thousand seven hundred and eighty-seven ratepayers. As of this afternoon, actually, as of this evening with a couple that were handed in, the city received a total of eighty-one protest ballots, which does not meet the majority protest threshold. Adoption of Resolution nineteen dash seventy, which is before you this evening, would establish a potential rate increase for solid waste services through August thirtieth, twenty twenty-one, which also happens to be the end of the city's franchise agreement with, uh, CRNR. Should the proposed rates, uh, for twenty twenty exceed the estimated rate presented here, then another Prop two eighteen proceeding would be required next year. So just as a, a, a basis of where we're at with the numbers, uh, Public Works, we received, uh, the CRNR's rate increase for two thousand and nineteen. The rate adjustment methodology resulted in the following percentage changes to service categories. For the service cart is a four point one percent change, for the bin, three point seven, roll-off box service, two point three percent, and a roll-off box processing, one point nine percent. Uh, based on the percentage changes above, the impact on the typical monthly bill would be as follows. Again, for the standard cart, we'd be moving from eighteen dollars and eighty-seven cents to nineteen dollars and sixty-four cents. That is a seventy-seven cent increase. And then the three-yard bin, once a week, and these are our most common services that we have here. Uh, the rate is a hundred and thirty dollars and forty-nine cents, and it would move up to approximately a hundred and thirty-five dollars and thirty-two cents. Uh, and again, because we're trying to carry a Prop two eighteen for two consecutive years, we have the proposed rates, but CRNR doesn't submit rates for the twenty twenty year, so we essentially tried to, um, uh, estimate what those rates are gonna be, and we, we estimate those by looking at the percentage changes dating all the way back to two thousand and seven, uh, when we started the original franchise. So given the fact that we've looked at almost the past twelve years of rate increases that have been submitted to the city, uh, the twenty twenty estimated rate adjustment would be for carts, three point seven percent, uh, the bins, three point seven, the roll-offs, two point seven, and the box processing, two point eight. And again, uh, the impact in terms of dollars, uh, from two thousand and nineteen to two thousand and twenty would be approximately seventy-three cent increase, up to twenty dollars and thirty-seven cents. And then the three-yard bin, uh, once a week, would go from one thirty-five up to one forty. So just quick, uh, look at what other cities surrounding Bellflower are currently paying, uh, with, uh, their trash haulers. Uh, as you can see, uh, Norwalk, uh, is the, uh, low, they have the lowest current rate, and that's pretty reflective of the fact that they just renegotiated a contract here in the last year. Uh, and Pico Rivera is the highest. Uh, Bellflower is the third lowest currently. Uh, once the new rates are implemented, implemented for the twenty nineteen year, we will ju- jump over Paramount, and we will be, uh, the fourth lowest out of the group of ten surrounding cities. And similar for the commercial three-yard bins, um, currently we're the fourth lowest, and after this implementation, we would be the, um, uh, we'd be the fifth lowest here. And then for our recycled waste, uh, again, we're kinda middle of the pack, um, as it relates to the commercial three-yard recycle bin. And with the, with the rate adjustment, we would stay in that position. Uh, recycling, uh, the organic recycling for the sixty-five gallon cart, we're the second lowest. We would continue to be the second lowest. And then for organic waste recycling, we are the lowest, and we would continue to be the lowest with the current rates as proposed. Uh, and just another quick snapshot here, here's our rate comparison with other CRNR clients. Uh, so CRNR also, also has franchises with Huntington Park, uh, along with Santa Fe Springs, a portion of Santa Fe Springs and Artesia in this area. Uh, we are the second lowest, and after the rate implementation for twenty nineteen, we will continue to be the second lowest as it, as it relates to the, uh, single-family residential, which is our most common service here. And for the commercial three-yard bin, we are the lowest right now. And after implementation of these rates, we would continue to be the lowest out of their, um, out of all their client cities in the area. And again, the commercial three-yard recycle bin, um, we're the second lowest, and we continue to be the second lowest after the rate implementation. And then for the organic recycling, uh, we're currently, out of their, out of their group, we are the, the highest in this category, and we would continue, it wouldn't be going down, so we'll remain in that spot. And then the organic waste recycling for a two-yard bin, uh, the lowest, and we would continue to be the lowest that, that they have in terms of their clients here in this area. So with that, uh, the recommendation this evening is to open the public hearing, take testimonial documentary evidence, and after considering the evidence, adopt Resolution Number nineteen dash seventy, uh, then approve CRNR Incorporated's annual rate adjustment request for two thousand and nineteen rate year, or alternatively, discuss and take other action related to this item. I'd be more than happy to answer any questions. Uh, Dean Rutledge from CRNR is in the audience, and he can answer any questions on behalf of CRNR this evening as well.
Uh, thank you, Mister Gorecki. Uh, for the benefit of our audience, our residents, uh, our ratepayers, the, uh, what we are proving today, tonight, is the, um, the proposed adjustment, rate adjustment that were provided by CRNR. So the, the methodology was already approved in the franchise agreement that was signed years and years ago.
Correct.
So every time there is an adjustment, what they do is they propose adjustments, and staff reviews those adjustments to make sure that they follow the methodology that was approved when the franchise agreement was, um, was signed. So that's, and, uh, I just wanna make, clarify here, uh, Mister Gorecki, just for the benefit for, for our audience, that you verify the rate adjustment methodology, and it follows the, uh, the spirit and the intent of the franchise agreement.
That's one hundred percent correct, yeah. We are, we are not establishing rates, we don't establish rates, uh, for trash. Um, CRNR looks at the methodology, they look at all those indices, indices that I pointed out earlier, and there's a simple mathematic formula that says this is what the rates are based on these indices.
Okay, very good, all right, thank you. Any question of Mister Gorecki?
No.
Okay, is there a motion to open the public hearing?
Move. Second.
A motion by Councilmember Hamada, seconded by Councilmember Dunn to open the public hearing. So anyone here would like to speak on this item?
No.
Mayor, I do have a question.
Just state your name.
Uh, my name's Gerald Serta.
There you go.
I do have a question. Uh, with CRNR, if some of the customers fall behind on their accounts, what would be the process from CRNR, and, and if their city would be, um, eh, the kinda like in the middle of that situation?
Uh, there, there's a long process, I will have, uh, Mister Dean Rutledge to, um, respond to that later on. So hold back on your question, we'll get back to you on that. I know there's a process that, uh, they follow.
Thank you.
Okay. Uh, anyone else? Okay, Mister Rutledge, can you come up? Oh, you have a question, sir?
Hey, Mister Whitehead at ninety-eight fifty Arkansas. And my question is this, uh, the current, uh, franchise agreement ra- uh, wraps up in twenty twenty-one?
Twenty twenty-one.
So, uh, when will you start the process of putting out the shingle to solicit other bids for, uh, other possible vendors?
In fact, it's on the agenda tonight.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It's in the consent calendar, isn't it?
Yep, mm-hmm. It's the last item on the consent calendar. All right, Dean, if you can come up here. I know there's a very long process, very meticulous process that you follow.
Good evening, Mister Mayor and Council Members. Dean Rutledge with CRNR, it's a pleasure to see you all again tonight, and, uh, staff. The, um, procedure under, under the city ordinance is that any delinquency would go on to the tax rolls after a twelve-month period. And what's interesting, it's very common in Los Angeles County for cities to have that delinquency, uh, provision. So the bottom line is that people that do pay their bills do not have to, uh, pay a higher rate to pay for those that don't, because it goes on to the, uh, tax rolls, and we get paid over a period of time.
Okay.
Um, if I could add a couple things while I'm up here, Mister Mayor?
Sure, go ahead.
Um, it's an interesting contract that we have had with you since two thousand and eleven, and I wanted to make a couple comments that maybe weren't brought out with the staff report. And, uh, maybe the audience would be interested. I, I guess kinda passionate about this, been doing this a long time, Mister Stewart, so get, just be with, bear with me for a second. Um, when we look at trash franchise contracts, there's really three things that a city looks at. Number one is service. Are you getting decent service? Are you having complaints? Is there some type of service that maybe you don't have and you need to have? And I think CRNR and the city have worked together in the last ten years to come up with, um, things that you'd needed. For example, the organic rate structure, we came up, we worked together on it, it came to the council, it got approved, and it's working very well. The second thing that the city needs to look at in any, in any franchise is the rates. Our, our residents and our commercial businesses is getting the best rates possible. And that's typically why a city would go out to bid every few years, to take a look at the rates and make sure that, um, the rates are competitive. In the last couple years, um, four of the five cities on your list have gone out to bid. All, four out of those five cities, I'm sorry, five cities have gone out to bid. Four out of those five cities, the commercial rates went up substantially and are higher than your current rates. So think about that for a second. In fact, Norwalk's a really good example. They have a lower residential rate than you by a couple, two or three dollars a month, but their commercial rates are fifty percent higher than yours. Can you imagine something like that in the commercial districts here in Bellflower? When you're encouraged, trying to encourage businesses and so forth? Another thing that-
This item, we're talking about another item, aren't we?
Yeah, I was, yeah, we are, that's another item.
Oh, okay, yeah, I mean, but, I'm sorry, Mister Rutledge, this is, this is the public hearing for the request, yeah.
Okay, I'd be happy to continue later if you'd rather, Mister Mayor. That, would you like me to do?
Uh, when it comes up.
Pardon me?
When it comes up on the agenda.
Thank you very much.
We'll, we'll let you know when it comes up.
Yeah, we'll let you, okay. Anyone else? Okay, is there a motion to close the public hearing?
Move to close the public hearing.
Second. Motion by Councilmember Coops, seconded by Councilmember Hamada to close the public hearing. Without an objection, that will be the order.
Mayor?
Okay.
Make a resolution-
Doesn't matter, Dunn.
Make a motion to, uh, adopt Resolution Number, uh, eighteen dash seventy, resolution establishing potential rate adjustments for residential, commercial, and multifamily solid waste collection services charged by CRNR Incorporated for a two-year period commencing on September first, two thousand and nineteen, and approve CRNR's Incorporated annual rate adjustment request for two thousand and nineteen.
Mister Mayor, I'll second that, I believe it was, uh, uh, Resolution nineteen dash seventy? Nineteen dash seventy, okay, duly noted. Uh, motion by Councilmember Dunn, seconded by Mayor Potem Garza, for the city of, City Council of City of Bellflower to approve, adopt Resolution nineteen dash seventy. Roll call, please.
I'm sorry, Mister Mayor, just a quick question for Carl. Just, uh, is there a potential typo on page two of two? I just realized that, um, uh, under I, it makes reference to the potential rate increases for, it just says commercial and multifamily. Does it, are you, did you also wanna include just resident? How did you wanna, because, does that include single family too, or?
I'm sorry, which page is this?
Uh, page two of two of the, oh, on, uh, page eight of the report, but page two of two of the reso, uh, uh, I. Uh, I, uh, up on top.
The very top.
It makes reference to the increases for commercial and multifamily.
Yes, you are correct, it should read residential.
Yeah, all right, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
So it's gonna be corrected to include, as amended?
Yeah.
Okay, roll call, please.
Councilmember Hamada?
Aye.
Councilmember Coops?
Aye.
Mayor Potem Garza?
Aye.
Councilmember Dunn?
Aye.
Mayor Santinas?
Aye.
So there are no ordinances and resolutions for consideration tonight, so we're moving on to item thirteen A. Mister Stewart?
This is consideration impossible action, adopt Resolution Number nineteen dash sixty-six, a resolution to record a notice of special assessment for nuisance abatement at nine zero two one Somerset Boulevard, APN number six two seven eight dash zero zero eight dash zero one zero. And I believe we have Miss Carpolis here to make staff report to the council. And I believe we have Ms. Carpolis here to make staff report to the council.
The City Council.
Good evening.
I'm here to present item thirteen A, which is a possible special assessment of nine oh two one Somerset. Nine oh two one Somerset is a vacant commercial property. It's been an open code enforcement case with the city since April of two thousand and nineteen due to overgrown vegetation and graffiti. Um, code enforcement has tried to obtain voluntary compliance from the property owner. However, despite, um, numerous correspondence and efforts to obtain voluntary compliance, um, the property owner has refused to voluntarily abate the nuisance, um, which resulted in the city obtaining an abatement warrant. And the abatement of the property was conducted in June of this year. The city had to, um, hire an outside contractor to clear the overgrown vegetation and to, um, remove the graffiti. This cost the city about five thousand, five hundred and fifty-three dollars and eighty-six cents in abatement costs. Um, the city sent the property owner two notices, one in June and one in August, demanding full repayment for the abatement costs. And the property owner has neither appealed these costs nor reimbursed the city. At this time, staff is asking the City Council to approve the resolution to record a notice of special assessment for the nuisance abatement at nine oh two one Somerset, and I am happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Uh, thanks, thanks for the presentation, Natalie. I, I thought that when you were, uh, in the staff report that we are trying to collect just five thousand dollars. I thought that was, that was cheap. Considering how much effort was expended, uh, are, are we sure that we accounted for all the time, staff time on this, code enforcement? Mr. Stewart, sir?
We have, we're sure that we've recovered our costs that we have into this, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. That's all I have. Any question?
Yeah. Um, it being a vacant lot and we just, uh, passed our new vacant land ordinance, are we going to continue with this property the rest of the way with setback fencing to code? And should we, can we roll those costs into this nuisance abatement?
Not ahead of time. I would go ahead and exact this cost now and then we'll carry it on another function if we need to.
Why it takes so long for a city to get something done?
Well, we gotta get paid sometime.
And, and sir, for clarification purposes, I believe that this property was abated concurrent to the passage of the vacant property ordinance.
By the way, just for, just for-
We'll have chapter two on this one.
That property is on the north, northeast of Somerset and Lakewood, right? The old, um-
Paramount, yeah.
Okay. Any question?
I, I like where he's going, but yeah.
We just have to be very cautious.
Absolutely.
I like to be efficient, not cautious.
Don't want to get sued. Any question? Councilmember Hamada?
Um, just, well, I'm sorry, uh, I mean, just thinking, just staring at the picture. Um, and, and with the vacant property ordinance, will we be getting a, a decent fence around it?
There currently is a fence around the property now.
It's a cha, it's just a chain link?
That's correct. It will require to have decorative fencing and it will have to be brought up to the new code with regard to vacant properties.
That's what I wanted to hear. Thank you.
So that's step two.
Correct. Phase two.
Yep. Okay, uh, any, any comments from the public on this item? All right.
Mr. Mayor, there's no further comment or questions. I'd like to, um, recommend, uh, make a motion to adopt resolution number nineteen dash sixty-six, a resolution to record a notice of special assessment for nuisance abatement at nine zero two one Somerset Boulevard, APN six two seven eight dash zero zero eight dash zero one zero.
Second.
Uh, motion by, uh, Mayor Protem Garza, seconded by Councilmember Hamada for the City of Council of Bellflower to adopt resolution nineteen dash sixty-six. Any other comments? Okay, roll call, please.
Councilmember Hamada?
Aye.
Councilmember Coops?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Garza?
Aye.
Councilmember Dutton?
Aye.
Mayor Santinas?
Aye. All right, consent calendar. Anyone would like to pull an item? Okay, Mr. Rutledge, okay?
Mr. Mayor, um, I am actually going to be recusing myself from, uh, item fourteen dash O, uh, due to, uh, a potential, uh, client, um, employer relationship, so in the utmost of caution, I'm going to be stepping out of the room.
Okay.
Mayor, I'm going to recuse myself from fourteen M as in Mary. Uh, I have property within five hundred feet of that location.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Uh, Councilmember Dunn, uh, Coops?
Yep.
The other guy.
I'll be, uh, recusing myself from fourteen D because I have property within five hundred feet of that situation. Also fourteen E, I also have property within five hundred feet of that property. And fourteen F, like Frank, I will also be recusing myself for the same reason. I have property within that jurisdiction of five hundred feet. So I'm out on D, E, and F.
Okay, very good, duly noted. Okay, uh, so we're going to be discussing item fourteen O.
Mr. Mayor, excuse me, members of the council, again, my name is Dean Rutledge. I'm with CRNR and I respectfully request that the City Council consider a postponement of this item for a couple of reasons. Uh, as the staff reported, there's approximately two years left on the current contract. And then there's a mutual option for another two years. So, uh, assuming that CRNR is doing a good job after two years, I would, I would hope that that mutual option be exercised as, as we had hoped it would when we signed this contract in two thousand and eleven. Um, as I started speaking a little while ago, there's three things the city typically looks at in a contract. Service, of course, we all know about service. We want to make sure we have the best service possible. I don't think there's a company out there that gives as good a service as CRNR. And our lack of complaints in City of Bellflower, I think, proved that. The second thing is rates. Uh, your rates, as staff sho- showed, are substantially, uh, either in the middle or on the lower side, competitive rate. In fact, in the last few years, five of the ten cities that staff reported on have gone out for proposals. Four out of those rates went up on commercial. And one of them, the city of Norwalk, right next door over here, although they have a low residential rate for you, there's, their commercial rate is fifty percent higher than yours. So I think it would be pretty, pretty difficult for, um, the commercial businesses in the City of Bellflower to absorb some major increase like that. In fact, I think in a year or so, you'll see that the residential rate in Norwalk will go up under, under an extraordinary and think that was promised to that hauler after the first year. And, and I don't think, I know they were. The third thing the city looks at is benefits. What cities, what benefits does the city get from the franchise? First of all, is the franchise fee. So s- ten percent of everything that's taken in goes back to the city and is, and is used by the city for general fund items. Second of all, back in two thousand and eleven, if you recall, we included street sweeping into this contract, which saved the city roughly two hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year with no impact on the rates. I'm, I'm negotiating with the city right now and adding street sweeping into their contract, and that's roughly eighty cents to a dollar per month per resident. So take that off of our rate compared to the others. And on the commercial side, it ra, it goes from five to six dollars per month per bin. It's a substantial amount of money. So when you do a rate comparison, street sweeping was not included in this rate comparison, but does substantially lower your rate again from the ones that were used in the comparison. With that, I will, oh, you, I'm open to any questions, Mr. Mayor, the council may have, but again, I would, I would suggest, uh, uh, in fact, Mr. Stewart and I have a meeting set, I think, next week or the week after. I'd like to talk to Mr. Stewart about a couple, a couple of these things before action is taken, and I appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay. I'd like to hear from our city manager for any response.
I have no problem if you want to. We would postpone it for two weeks.
So in terms of timing, we still have plenty of time to make sure that if we go ahead and get this, uh, get a, a rebid on this trash hauling, we have plenty of time.
If you move it back two weeks, we have plenty of time.
Okay.
There's, we just put it on because we got it done, so if you want to move it, that's fine.
Any comment? Any?
Yeah, I, I could see putting it off to-
For two weeks?
To get more educated-
Okay.
About the process, only because we, this is a contract for about eighty-eight thousand dollars and whether we need, you know, to spend that money or not.
Uh, Dean, is two weeks enough? You're just asking for two weeks' extension? Are we going to postpone it for two weeks?
Or thirty days.
How about next month? Mr. Stewart, is that okay? Okay, you're going to put it back?
We're going to pull that item for now?
So pull that item for now. So, but you can assure us that we have sufficient time? Okay. All right, so we'll pull that item for tonight?
Fourteen O.
Fourteen O. Okay. Anyone else? Uh, anyone would like to pull an item? I'd like to pull just, oh, uh, let the record reflect that, um, Council, Mayor Protem Garza is rejoining a meeting. And le, I'd just like to pull, um, fourteen K for a comment. This is regarding the, um, uh, parking restriction or Vir, on Virginia between, uh, Palm Street and, um, and Artesia, and I just want to appreciate, I want to thank the residents in that area, uh, for working with our public safety staff and our sheriff's department to make sure that this is enforced because the issue was, um, there's a car dealership who was, who are parking their cars on the street. So the residents are losing their parking space, so it became a permit parking only. Since the city initiated the parking permit only, the residents did not have to pay for the permit fee. It was absorbed by the city. So I just, again, I just want to thank the residents of that area for bring, to, for bringing up that issue with us and working with our staff to make sure that, um, they have the parking space that they need so that when they come home at night from work, they still have a space on the street for them. So, again, thank you. All right, so with that, um, for the record, um, is there a motion to approve the consent calendar noting that Councilmember Dunn, recusing himself on item fourteen M, and Councilmember Coops on item fourteen D, fourteen E, and fourteen F?
I'll move the consent calendar, balance of it.
A motion by Councilmember Dunn, seconded by Councilmember Coops to approve the consent calendar. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Hamada?
Aye.
Councilmember Coops?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Garza?
Aye.
Councilmember Dutton?
Aye.
Mayor Santinas?
Aye. Okay, council reports, um, Councilmember Hamada?
Oh, gee, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, good amount of activity, uh, this past few weeks. Uh, did have the, uh, great opportunity to have coffee with, uh, our, our economic development director and, and staff. And, uh, we met some of the community members and got some good updates on projects and, uh, uh, had some good dialogue with, uh, with the community and about, uh, uh, what, uh, what they like to see and, uh, again, how things are going in town. And, uh, we, uh, got a lot of, we're getting a lot of support from the community. Uh, everybody's enjoying what's happening and, uh, looking forward to, uh, uh, what's happening in the future. On the, uh, nineteenth, I, uh, did, uh, sit in on, uh, uh, the Youth Cultural Arts Foundation audition. So, uh, looking forward to next month's, uh, uh, performances. Uh, there'd be a lot of, uh, uh, really talented kids that are going to, uh, perform. So, uh, look forward to that next month. To have a chance to, uh, visit, uh, Somerset High School for their back-to-school night and again, to congratulate them, to, uh, keep the kids in school and, uh, get them through, uh, high school in a, in a timely manner. A lot of the kids are, uh, uh, making up a lot of credits in a short amount of time. So, uh, it's, uh, great to see that, uh, they're, uh, taking care of their education and, uh, uh, moving forward on their, uh, next step. Then had some more coffee with a cop, so again, a great time, uh, uh, with, um, uh, the sheriff's department. And, uh, they had, uh, at least, uh, six or eight of the staff there and, um, uh, Fantasy Cakes was packed. Uh, standing room only, and, uh, we had some great dialogue and just to meet the, uh, meet the officers and the, uh, the team, the public safety team. Uh, again, another great opportunity to, uh, uh, meet, uh, meet, uh, again, public safety, uh, uh, face to face and, uh, just ask them what you want. So, and they were happy to, um, uh, to respond. Same day, I did make it to the Chamber of Commerce Expo and, uh, able to see, I heard that it was, well, it was a great turnout. Got there at the beginning. I didn't get my ice cream, unfortunately, but, but, uh, um, it was a great turnout from the business, uh, community and, uh, uh, met some, uh, uh, some, uh, people I didn't know and, um, uh, met somebody from the Census Bureau. So, uh, they're hoping to, uh, uh, do some more, uh, programs in the area and get the word out, so. Uh, and of course, as I mentioned earlier today during announcements, um, got to, uh, uh, go to the somewhat soft opening of the In-N-Out. So, uh, it was a great, uh, uh, start. Uh, uh, it's an awesome facility. We know it's going to be really busy, uh, and, uh, uh, the staff is very attentive and they're, they're quick. Uh, they're well-trained and, uh, they, they can, they can move them, uh, quickly because I saw, unless I saw the whole team in the kitchen area and they were, they were not bouncing off each other. It was literally body to body almost, but they were, they were very efficient and making it through and, uh, uh, food was getting out there, uh, within, uh, you know, a matter of minutes, so. And, uh, last, I was able to attend, um, uh, the Albert Robles, um, uh, water, a water replacement district, uh, facility in Pico Rivera. Um, it's in honor of, um, uh, Mr. Robles, who was a longtime director, and he's also a current councilman in City of Carson. So we spent over twenty-five years with the district and, uh, so they've named that facility, uh, in his honor and, uh, quite a facility. Uh, it's a combination water processing, recycling facility, uh, which is right now, the building's only half-used, so it's the size of a football field. And so come time, it's going to be fully occupied with, with the equipment, processing water. That water will be injected back into the ground, so that's, that's, that's the WRD's role, uh, here. And, um, uh, with that, they've built a education, uh, center. So that's soon to open, I believe, in a couple of months. So there'll be, uh, some, uh, great, uh, field trips by the schools and, uh, hopefully the general public can check it out because they've, they've really done a nice facility. They've actually created a simulation of, I think, the San Gabriel River on site. And it's, it's with like a small channel and then they've, uh, created like a little waterway passage and so. Uh, they've done a great job, um, and it's, it's on a very large site, so, uh, with, you know, the process, I mean, that amount of water, it's, it, I, uh, acres and acres of feeding water, so, so they're gonna, uh, uh, process it, uh, and, uh, be free and with that, what they kept pushing that night was they're going to be free of purchased water because it costs a lot more to purchase water and then process it. They're going to be able to do it themselves and then get it into the ground. And hopefully keep the aquifers full for all of us, so. All right? Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Hamada. Councilmember Coops?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Earlier this evening, we were talking about how excited we were about having the new In-N-Out Burger finally in operation. And Len and I were talking before our meeting here, and he mentioned that when he came to work for the city six years ago, this was the beginning of the process. Isn't that right, Len? It took six years to widen the street, to line up with Metro, to buy the properties, to, um, be that close to the freeway and get the signals just right. So it was a joint effort by your organization and our, in our city, our public works and all your people that work together and Caltrans and Metro and some obstinate property owners that, uh, kept on thinking that we needed to pay more than it was worth. So when you sit in that intersection and you see the lighting and you see what has been done at the intersection with all the, uh, embossments that, you know, show the, where the crosswalks are and the emblem in the middle. I mean, you've got to look, pinch yourself to say, am I on the corner of Artesian Bellflower Boulevard? And so when Dunkin' Donuts gets going, and we've got other people that have, uh, thought processes on including themselves around there, uh, it's really a magnificent thing that you brought to our city and made happen, and I want to commend you on that, that, uh, we, we got it done. And, uh, we're kind of the envy of, uh, the cities around us that don't have an In-N-Out because we were able to get something that they don't have. And, uh, that's all I have, but I think that merits, uh, recognition. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Coops. Mayor Protem Garza?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I, I didn't want this to go, um, uh, just to pass it as, in terms of like if it's going to get ignored. I did want to address Mr. Butt's comment before on the homelessness issue. Absolutely right with merit on that issue. I don't want our residents or anybody else to think that we're ignoring you or this issue. We do have a contract with City of Net at this point that we're working on with them to address that issue. And so we're, we're giving that contract some time to pan out to see if they're effective and that work. But I want to assure you that we do hopefully have some news related to that issue that's gonna be coming up soon. So if all pans out well, again, I think, I'm hoping that you'll be absolutely happy with what's coming up, so. Moving on, In-N-Out, you know, the grand opening was great. That, that southern portion of, of our city is gonna be undergoing quite a bit of change here within the next year, so there's more projects coming up on that side of town. So please stay tuned because I think you're gonna, if you're happy with what's coming up, you're gonna be even happier with the other projects that are coming up as well. The Bellflower Boulevard widening, I mean, fantastic work, Lynn. You and your team really just, you know, hit out of the ballpark. I know that, I know that our residents, you know, with merit have been frustrated with the amount of traffic that's been going on in that area. It's, it's a pain that comes with, with improvements, but, you know, I want to thank the residents for their patience with us while this project went through. I think now that you see what has transpired there, I think, I can't think of one person that, that I've seen talk negatively about that, you know, the congestion that was there before is gone, right? The worst-case scenarios that I kept reading online of, of having congestion there tied in with the In-N-Out, you know, haven't panned out. So I, I just want to commend Lynn and Jeff and our whole staff really for working hard on that project. It's amazing. The crosswalk is great. The new traffic light signals opposed are, again, they tie in really nicely, so I just can't thank you guys enough. Great job. And then related to that, I do have a request to think about for the future. I noticed that that underpass, it's nice, but it, it points to the downtown being on the northern side. And I think now that we're reclaiming that southern side as well, I think that merits maybe having a different type of, of a painting under that underpass, right? Because I think now we, we have a grander scheme, so, you know, hopefully we can get that repainted at the appropriate time. And then lastly, I attended an event recently around a week ago. I was one of the guest speakers at this event. They had probably around a good hundred people in there. Most of them were not Bellflower residents. But what I wanted to share is that, is that in that event, I got to speak about Bellflower. I got to share about what's going on in our city and people were really happy, even though they're not residents of our city. So there's a lot of pride that I had in, in speaking about our city in this event. But the interesting thing is that we actually had two elected representatives from other cities, from surrounding cities, and I won't name them, that were in that meeting as well. And they waited till the end of the evening and they both came up to me and they asked, how are you guys doing what you're doing? We want to sit down with you, we want to see what Bellflower's doing. So I wanted to share that with you because I think that, that takes a, you know, it's a lot of pride. Others are noticing the progress that's going on in our city. And so to be a part of that is something that I take, take great honor in. So I want to share that with our staff, with our residents. I think we have a lot to be proud of. We have a lot more to go, but we're on our way. So again, I just want to share that good news. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor Protem Garza. Councilmember Dutton?
I'll chime in also downtown, no, not downtown, but Artesian Bellflower. Is anybody driven down there? You can actually get through from north of the ninety-one freeway straight shot. All the lights are timed. They haven't been timed in decades. And if they got timed, they weren't. I don't know, it's the technology they have now with the control boxes, but that means just to be able to drive and that's one reason there's no traffic. The aesthetics are nice. And if anybody noticed, the In-N-Out monument sign not only says downtown Bellflower at the bottom, but the arrow of In-N-Out logo points downtown. That's pretty cool. And we're talking about everything that was done down there and no money came out of the general fund. It was all measure our money from the MTA. I believe we probably had some cost in it in staff time managing the project, unless we got reimbursed for that. But that was no money from the City of Bellflower's coffers that they pulled that off. And that's a big win for this town. And with that said, let's go home.
Can I have?
Well, let's go home. Hurry up.
Let me just chime in about In-N-Out anyway, since In-N-Out is the, is the topic of the evening. As a consumer, I kind of sympathize with the, with the anticipated traffic on Artesia and Bellflower Boulevard. So as a, one of those who learned about being a secret shopper, I've been around, I've been, I've done twice already the In-N-Out drive-through. And there was, there was a line, but there was no congestion. I followed it, I followed the rules and things like that. And it was very smooth and there's about, probably about seven cars ahead of me. And one time, I went on Saturday, actually Sunday morning, twelve midnight, just to test the system, see how it works. And I was able to order my food, get out, get into In-N-Out on Bellflower Boulevard, went to the drive-through, went out on Artesia, made a U-turn on legal U-turn on Ardmore and went back on the freeway. Because typically, if someone is coming from the airport and going to Orange County, the question is, how will they get back to the freeway? So I tried that, I tried that approach and it worked. So make a legal U-turn on Ardmore, go back and make a left on Bellflower Boulevard and there you go on, on Artesia Freeway. Well, I want to test the system.
Your system?
I said, I'm a secret shopper, so. So if somebody complains, oh, there's so much congestion, I can say, you know what? I went at midnight on a Saturday and it was working well. Anyway, just, just a point on In-N-Out. So anyway, on August fifteen, I, I participated in the back-to-school prayer, host led by our pastor Moshe Kanon at the Bellflower Independent School District Office flagpole. And that was a well-attended event. On August nineteen, I went to the public meeting regarding the, regarding the City of Paramount joining the Southeast Los Angeles County Workforce Development Board. And it was a, a meeting available to the public for their comments and it was, they made a presentation, somebody from the county, somebody from the state vetted the application form and it really went well. For your information, the Southeast Los Angeles County Workforce Development Board is composed of, currently composed of seven cities, Artesia, Bellflower, Cervitos, Downey, Hawaiian Gardens, Lakewood, and Norwalk. And so one, when we add, it's not a matter of if anymore because we get support from the seven cities and we got support from the county supervisor, Janice Hahn. So it seems like there's no more obstacle to go through other than Sacramento. It's quite interesting that, something to look forward to because once we add the City of Paramount into the Selaco web, we will now hit the threshold of half a million residents in our board. So, and that's a major milestone because a lot of the grants available for workforce development are only available for if you're a big player. That means that you have, you have at least half a million residents in your development board. So once we have that, I think we'll be on our way to getting more grants for our city and our residents in this area. If everything goes well, it will be effective July first, 2020. So let's keep our fingers crossed next it's gonna happen. Okay, and tonight, oh, one more thing. I just want to remind you, if you have not received your Bellflower City Bell Parks and Recreation brochure, please contact the Parks and Recreation Department or go to the parks or go to City Hall, get a copy of this. There's a lot of information in this brochure. And finally, tonight, I'd like to adjourn this meeting in honor of Henry Mickey Herrera. Mickey was born on October first, nineteen twenty-nine in Bellflower, California, and passed away in August seventh, two thousand and nineteen at the age of eighty-nine. He's the youngest child of parents Tranquilino and Guadalupe Herrera and was born, raised, and lived all his life in the City of Bellflower. He was married with his wife Mary for sixty-three years and together they have one daughter, Mary Therese, fondly known as Thumpy Herrera. He served our country as a US Army infantryman during the Korean War. He worked for the Bellflower Independent School District for twenty-one years. He was hired as a painter in nineteen seventy-four and was promoted to supervisor in nineteen eighty-three. He was active at St. Bernice Parish, serving as usher, volunteering at church festivals, bingo, maintenance, maintenance of the church and the school. He was active with the Knights of Columbus, serving as Grand Knight. He was predeceded by his parents Tranquilino and Guadalupe, daughter Mary Therese, and siblings Louis, Connie, and Helen. He survived by his wife Mary, brother Jess, and many nieces and nephews. Services for Mickey were held at also cemetery on August twenty-first. I'm gonna miss him. He's a very close friend of mine. He lives, he lives in my neighborhood and I see him very, I used to see him very often. So our deepest sympathies and heartfelt condolences go out to the Herrera family. So with that, we're adjourning this meeting in memory of Henry Mickey Herrera to the next regular meeting with the Bellflower City Council at five thirty PM on Monday, September ninth, two thousand and nineteen. This meeting is now adjourned.